Good evening, everyone. And welcome to the regular meeting of the Borough of Englewood Cliffs Mayor and Council. Today is July 11th, 2018. It's about 8:35 PM. Sorry, we ran a little bit late. I called the meeting to order, and I asked the clerks to do a roll call.
Mayor Branca?
Yeah.
Councilperson Zoversa?
Yes.
E. Park?
President.
O.
Here.
McMorro.
Here.
N. Park.
Here.
Wu.
Here.
Borough Administrator.
Here.
Borough Attorney.
President.
Municipal Clerk. And DPW Superintendent.
Okay, thank you. Let's all stand and start our meeting as we always do with the flag salute and remain standing after, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of this land, with all due diligence, and with all the love and reverence of our God and his children.
I'd like to just have a moment of silence for the Trinidad family from Teaneck. The father of four daughters died in an automobile accident in Delaware, and the mom is in bad shape as well. So, we'll just reflect a moment on them. And also, I read a statistic today which was quite profound. Thirty-one police officers have been gunned down in 2018 so far nationwide, which is 15 percent more than last year. The number should be zero. So, a moment of silence for all of that and their families. Thank you. Madam Clerk, would you please read into the record the Open Public Meetings Act statement?
Adequate notice of this meeting was given to the press and posted as required. Date and time of this meeting was legally given as required by the Open Public Meetings Act. This notice is on file with the municipal clerk and posted on the bulletin board. Minutes of this meeting will be made available to the public upon the completion of typing approved reading by the municipal clerk.
Okay, thank you very much. I just wanted to point out that we are collecting non-perishable food items, as we do at each of our regular meetings, for the office of concern Food Pantry in Englewood. Again, that's a great charity that we should try to support more than we have so far. So, if you haven't brought anything -- well, let me say this. If you did bring something tonight, thank you very much. And George McKenna, who runs the Food Pantry in Englewood, also thanks you. He mentioned that personally. If you haven't brought anything and you want to support a charity, then you could go home, bring it back, or even drop it off tomorrow morning, sometime before mid-morning when they do the pickup, okay? There's a lot of working poor in Bergen County. We may not see them here in Englewood Cliffs, but they are here, and we should try to help them. I'm just going to skip over a few things here. The -- let's see. Oh, I want to mention a couple of things, because at the end of our meeting, so many people leave, so they don't really hear everything. A couple of months ago, I asked that a gate be installed at Johnson Park. There's a driveway there, and I kept seeing cars driving into it. There's a lot of children around, people around. There should not be any cars around. We have now corrected that. We're trying to basically harden some of our assets in town to make sure that vehicles cannot penetrate them. If you notice at all my public events, we have trucks blocking roads to make sure that everyone gathering is safe. I wish we didn't have to do it all, but I think we do. And I think the park could be further hardened in terms of having bollards installed and other things. Also, I want to mention that, you know, when I became mayor, I -- the newspaper article the next morning was, "He's the mayor, he's going to fire everyone." That's what they wrote. And I said, "No, no, no, no. You got it all wrong." My position is, and it always has been, and you've probably heard me say this many times, if you have a job in the borough, and you do your job, you'll have a job, and you'll keep your job. I've spent over 20 hours in the last couple of days listening to the audio recordings that were made by our police chief, interacting with borough employees, police officers, and others. And I'm disappointed, to say the least. So, just remember what I said, okay? I have a fiduciary duty to this town and its citizens, and you know me by now. I will enforce those fiduciary duties. But the other thing I want to mention today is that, like clockwork, the Eye on the Cliffs newsletter came out yesterday, and it was put together -- the founders were Debbie Savari, who's running for council, Karen Geiger, who's suing the borough. Don't believe everything you read. Call me if you have any questions. And I'm actually directing this also to people at home who are watching this. You're getting those newsletters, and they're gross misrepresentations of actually what's happening here. And the one thing that was interesting is that Ms. Geiger and her affiliates wrote that our litigation expenses are increasing. What they did tell you is our litigations are increasing because they're suing the town, okay? So, if you're watching this, or if you're out there, feel free to call me. We could discuss this. But I'm not going to have people slandered, which brings me to the next point. Last week, there was -- it was interesting, because it was like a combination of local and outside forces who got together and basically dropped off packages of many people's driveways. I see somebody laughing back there. And it was in regards to one of our employees. It was defamatory, it was slanderous. I will support all our employees, okay? And just, I don't know what you're trying to accomplish by tearing people down, but, you know, in life, you could either be a pearl seeker or a pearl crusher. I'm looking at a lot of pearl crushers out there, personally. I like to seek pearls and find value in everything, so I encourage you to change your ways. Unfortunately, we have to deal with what happened last week also. Okay, there's also been some press recently, which I will address after the public portion, because I'd like to hear what you have to say as well. So, that said, we had correspondence from Eric Bernstein. It's privileged and confidential. There's correspondence from Senator Loretta Weinberg. That was regarding the Eastwood complaint. For all those who love Oprah so much, I sent Senator Weinberg a letter today. So, Oprah away, and you could read away as well.
Really?
I know.
Just email the mayor.
You can just email me as well, if you want. I'll send it to you. Let's work for our clerk. So, with all that said, I'd like to open the meeting up to the public. Can I have a motion to do that?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Okay, so here are the rules. You get to raise your hand. When I call on you, you come up to the microphone and you speak. But you don't speak for an hour. Let's try to keep it to like three or five minutes. And again, there's no speaking from the public unless you're up here speaking and you're recognized, okay? So, anybody wishing to speak, raise your hand. Yes?
Just to add, remind you that a resolution was added.
Okay. So, just for everybody's reference also, there's a new resolution that was added. It's number 158. And that was added to authorize the business administrator, the borough administrator, to issue a contract to DNL and to Mazer Engineering in connection with the Riverside Co-op and the DOT grant for paving purposes. And this is all to be done after -- was it a period?
After the estoppel period.
After the estoppel period, the defined term of the bond is finished, okay? Sir, can you state your name and address?
David Seavon, 129 Hollywood Avenue. How you doing? Last week, an unusual situation happened. Somebody that's been watching every single one of yous, that knows more about you, more about the administrator, probably since the administrator's been born.
How's that possible?
I'm going to give it to you. It's right here. The mayor, listen.
Since the administrator was born.
In utero. Somebody knew you in utero other than your mother. Go ahead, sir.
And threw a packet on my driveway. But this man that threw the packet on his driveway has a brain that is unbelievable.
Do you know him?
I don't know. Never seen him in my life. But he's sent a lot of packets to a lot of different people. I'm going to give each and every one of yous this packet. You're going to go home tonight, you're going to open it up, and you're going to read it. It's a very interesting story. This is an individual that's sitting in this room, that I tried to call him up two weeks ago, and he never got back to me. This is an individual that you hired, okay? And it's the truth, the facts, the evidence of this man sitting here in this room. You know, my father told me one thing one time, "Don't ever be afraid to talk to anybody." And I'm here talking to everybody in this town and a guy that you hired.
Don't approach us. You leave him there. Don't approach the bench.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. Here's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine.
Please leave them on the table, please.
Leave them on the table.
For what a great designer also. On the second page. Thank you. Can I have a copy? Absolutely, thank you, sir.
It's all right, mayor.
You left something on the table.
Mayor, it's all right.
Mark, would you take those packets, please, and put them over there? Take those packets and put them over there.
Yeah, hello. Just for your thumb in the orange.
All right.
Okay, anybody else in the public wishing to be heard? Yes.
There's been an insinuation that possibly me or anybody on that side of the room might have had something to do with those packets that were delivered. I can assure you that if I had something to say, I would sign my name to it, okay? So, you can be sure. I'm not saying I looked at the package, I don't know what's true, what's not true. What I do know is that I was against hiring a BA, separate from the clerk BA together at the position, and I stand by that.
Do you know who sent them?
I have no idea who sent that package.
You received one?
I received one.
So, you were handpicked to receive that package, anonymous one?
It was on my driveway.
That's very interesting.
I don't see what's -- well, you know what? I just wanted to make clear for everybody, okay? I don't know who put the packet there, and if it came from me, my name would have been on it. So, if I have something to say, I'm going to sign my name to it. You can be sure of that. That's all I wanted to say regarding that. Second, there's a resolution here to establish some type of a program for borough employees to donate their sick time to other employees. I'm just curious, what is the purpose of that? Are we doing that in lieu of Jerry Frank or disability policy? Like, I think it kind of puts borough employees in an awkward position if they're asked to give up their sick time, because what if you give up your sick time, and then you get sick? The next person doesn't want to give up their sick time, and you could wind up in the same position. So, I'm not sure of why we're doing this.
That's actually a loser for you, because it was the borough employees who actually approached us and asked if they could help one of their own, who I will not identify, who was gravely ill, and they wanted to do something for that person. And I thought it was a very nice gesture, and we're going to also be raising money to help that individual. Is that okay with you?
Um, mayor, being a loser for me, I mean, come on. Let's not be like that, please. No, you want to stop it when I'm responding to the mayor's comments.
I said the topic of the loser.
What I'm saying to you, okay, is that this will eventually be a problem. I do think you should have a fundraiser if somebody is in need of help, whether it be a borough employee or a resident of this town. So, it's not about being a loser for me. I didn't bring it up to cause problems with you. I brought it up to say I see it being a problem. Yes, mayor, you're being political.
Quite well taken, but the employees support it.
We're only at the investigation stage right now, so we're going to be recording that.
That's why I say it's money paid for that investigation.
Let the record reflect she's against helping people that are in need, that's all. Not going to -- really? Please stop yelling from the audience. Please. Decorum. Thank you, nothing further.
Yes.
Lauren Eastwood.
I'm sorry.
Lauren Eastwood, Four Wheeler Drive. I think it's wonderful that the employees want to help each other. I believe that this has been done in the past with a seriously, ultimately fatally ill employee voluntarily by other employees who wanted to help that employee. And I see absolutely no reason that there's a problem with having a voluntary program if people want to participate in it.
Thank you. I thought it was a great gesture, without anyone asking for it. They just asked us to do it. Anybody else? Yeah.
Maybe I just want to tell them that it has been done in the past. We're just kind of making it up.
We want to do it officially and legally, and I need to verify the legality of it.
So, in the past, and there are many, I'm not going to -- there are many individuals sitting in the audience now. They know who they are, and I think they might have even participated in when there was another that was in need. And especially if you can do it and you would like to participate, that's great. And we have some great employees that -- it shows caring, and there's nothing wrong with it. It's a wonderful thing.
Much of them know that it's not something.
No, it was done in the past, yeah.
Well, I didn't think it could possibly be controversial to help somebody.
I didn't either.
This is Englewood Cliffs, so we do the most basic stuff.
And one.
Anybody else? Yes. No, I met the person behind you. Did you raise your hand, Mr. Mayor? No. You have so much to say otherwise, why don't you come on up?
Sorry? Because I can raise my hand.
You always have so much to say when you're not here. I thought maybe for once you'd want to say something in public at the microphone.
Don't worry, sir.
All right.
I will tell you.
All right, good. Let's meet.
Debbie Fair, 49 Irving Avenue, Englewood Cliffs. I've said this before, and obviously I have to repeat it. This is a mayor and council meeting. You, mayor, are the chair of the meeting.
Thank you.
Council President McMorro is not the chair of the meeting. And when she speaks out, and especially if she speaks out in a manner to say, "Let the record reflect that a member of the public is against helping people," this is absolutely atrocious behavior. And for you to call out the reaction in the audience to such an outrageous statement and tell people in the audience about their decorum, I think that you, as the mayor, should address the decorum of your council president. She does not have the authority to put words in someone's mouth, say that, "Let the record reflect that a member of the public," who simply had a question about the resolution. The resolution did not say where this came from, what was behind it. She merely had a question, and she had a concern. And this is the public's right to come to a meeting, express their concern, ask questions. It is not the right of the council to admonish the public, and certainly not the right to say, "Let the record reflect that a member of the public does not care about helping people." I would say that Mrs. Savari has helped more people in her lifetime than you could possibly count. So, I wish that you would address that with Mrs. McMorro. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good night. Anybody else? Yes.
You just took the opportunity in your mayor's opening remarks to question the integrity of Eye on the Cliffs. And specifically, you commented about our comments on the increasing out-of-control litigation expenses. Mr. Mayor, one, I would like to add for the record that anybody who would like to get more information about why we write what we write is free to contact me at home, and my number is (201) 569-0812. Number two, if I challenge you as mayor to put together a list of all the litigations that we have currently in process in our borough, and how much money has been spent by the borough on each one. I'm in the process of doing it, and it's a Herculean task. But before you talk about other people wasting the borough's money, you should summarize just exactly how much each litigation is costing the borough and why it was initiated.
Should I include the one where you're the plaintiff?
I am the plaintiff on a lawsuit. I was granted intervenor status by the court, and the only money that has been spent by the borough on that lawsuit has been to try and not have me intervene, and the court ruled against you.
That's untrue.
That is not untrue, and I have -- if you're spending other monies, I'd like to know what it's on, if it's directed against me, because there are no other motions pending that I have initiated. So, please, try and deal with the truth. I know it's difficult for you.
Thank you so much for sharing -- no, no, you have a tour, Karen.
Mrs. Geiger.
So, thank you for sharing your feelings, and I'm glad you --
Not feelings, those are facts.
No, facts have no feelings. Those are feelings. So, listen, I'm glad you brought up Eye on the Cliffs again, because there's one thing I forgot, and it's somewhat of a comedy hour, because in Eye on the Cliffs, which I happen to have a copy here, believe it or not, so this is Eye on the Cliffs. It was started by Karen Geiger, Debbie Savari, Little Yaskos, and Debbie Fair, who you heard from earlier. So, in their tagline, because they are trying to pretend that they're not-for-profit, I guess, they say, "Eye on the Cliffs is a nonpartisan publication serving the entire community." Not just one political party, one faction, one political mission, but the entire community. So, that is a pure pre-11:30 PM late-night comedy. All right, anybody else? Yes. I did.
No, they did. Little Yaskos is an R, and so is Debbie Fair. They're quite parts.
Excellent.
Mary O'Shea, 12 Irving Avenue. I do recall an incident where sick days were given to a severely ill police officer by other members of the department as a member of the public. I remember this. And I think it's very honorable for other employees to voluntarily initiate something for a fellow worker that's ill. You know, very often, when somebody's in need, everybody wants to know, "What can I do? What can I do?" And that's a very, very meaningful thing to do. And they should be congratulated for bringing this to your attention, and the attorney is right to make sure that we cover the legalities of it, which I think the last time it was done, I think it was just done without any formal resolution. So, I have to disagree with the previous speaker on that, and it's something that should be -- we should all be thankful that the people in us that work for our town are very caring and want to participate in something like this, and they're not forced to. They're volunteering. Also, I was wondering too, Mr. Mayor, you mentioned a month or two ago about the tape recordings in the bathrooms, and then just now, earlier, you said you listened to more of -- you listened to the tapes over the weekend. Could you tell me when these tapes will be available for the public to listen to?
I wish, yeah.
Because I'd be interested to know.
Actually, I wish I could play them all for you tonight and have you listen to what actually goes on in this borough by people that we pay salaries to, who have fiduciary duties to this borough and its citizens. We've applied to the court to lift the confidentiality order, because, you know, once someone surreptitiously records everyone and they want to use it in their litigation, the first thing they do is ask the court to put a confidentiality gag order on it so no one else could hear it. So, that clown car left the garage a long time ago, and we are trying to have the court lift the confidentiality order, because I do want, and I'm speaking to people on video here as well, I do want everyone to hear what happened over the last two years, at least, and maybe even longer, because I don't think we have all the tapes. But to have a chief of police walking around with a live microphone, recording everyone, is just abhorrent to a free and functioning democracy, okay? And I challenge anyone to come to that microphone and tell me they're okay with it. None of you will. I know you won't.
Well, I know, I would personally not like to be recorded, especially not knowing it.
And you could probably, I'm sorry, you could probably tell just how aggravating it is for me to even have to talk about such childish, immature, insecure, unprofessional behavior. But that's what we have, okay? And I challenge all the employees, you can just stop talking out there, or you can leave. But I challenge all our employees to do the right thing. If you know something has happened in this borough that is wrong, unlawful, criminal, you better come forward now.
Well, thank you. I hope you're successful in lifting that order.
Yes, thank you.
I just wanted to, mayor, one thing I want to add about this whole situation with these tapes.
Everybody knows that who the main defendants are in that lawsuit. It's myself, the mayor, Mark Park, and Monsio Consalvo. Ms. Geiger made a statement about the costs of litigation. When those tapes are paid for the public, are played for the public, I think everybody's going to understand how we have gotten to the costs of these litigations. It's shocking to the core on what is on some of those tapes, and that's all that I can say.
Anybody else in the public wishing to be heard? Yes, sir.
My name is Andrew Skibber. I live 750 Floyd Street. I understand that our taxes are going to be increased. I also understand that that's mainly due to the costs of litigation. Some of it can't, has to be, like the affordable housing legal defense. But a lot of it has to do with other cases. And also, the insurance premiums are going up, and the deductibles are going up because of the losses in this town. So, I just have a question for the borough attorney. In the future, can, would it be legal to ask employees to sign binding arbitration clauses when they're employed in this town?
It would have to be negotiated as part of the collective bargaining agreement of each union. You can't ask individual employees to do that kind of thing. If they're members, or going to be, or prospective employees, or current employees, you cannot impose an arbitration requirement unless it is part of the collective bargaining agreement. And I've never seen arbitration in a collective bargaining agreement, because they're for unions. unions, they prefer courts.
I understand, but if we could do this, we would certainly decrease our costs.
Well, there's a debate about that, too, because arbitrations, the one thing about arbitrations is there's no jury--
Correct.
But they often take a long time, just like litigations do, and they take multiple lawyers, just like litigations do. The only savings is, you may not have a three-day, five-day, or ten-day trial before a jury, but you will have a trial before an arbitrator. So, there's debates about the cost of litigation versus arbitration, and when you ask for arbitration, it is giving up the right to a jury which is in our constitution. So, you know, people don't just do it, willy-nilly.
That's a good question, Mr. Steiber, and it is a negotiated point, even in the private sector, it's a negotiated point. There's one more element of expense in an arbitration, which is actually that you have to pay the arbitrator their hourly fee as well, whereas the judge is paid by the state. And sometimes you have more than one arbitrator, you'll have a panel of arbitrators, so now all of a sudden you have three attorneys at $700 an hour, you know, you're paying $2,100 an hour. So, arbitration does work in some places, and others it doesn't, but we'll keep note of that for all purposes.
But is it legal to ask remiss employees to sign this kind of agreement?
As a condition to employment, look, I think it's negotiated, you know, but you can't force arbitration on anyone, especially in the public sector.
I've never seen it in a public-sector collective bargaining agreement, so, you know, it's really debatable whether it would be legal or not, but if the union wanted to agree to it in a collective bargaining agreement, I would say it's a matter of negotiation and contract.
Yeah, and the other thing is, look, the contracts are one thing, but we want employees to feel like they're part of this town, that we appreciate them, we want to be appreciated by them, vice versa. I think a lot of the problem is from leadership in those departments, so I think that's something else that we could focus on to save ourselves a lot of money. Thank you, sir. Okay. Anybody else wishing to be heard? Yes.
Good evening, Dave DeGregorio, 165 Charlotte Place. I think the mayor mentioned something at the end of the last comments, leadership, and that's crucial, leadership. I was very pleased to have brought my son to this meeting last week, so he could see something about what goes on here. We left the meeting, and up on the corner, I said to him, I said, "Ian," I said, "You could net, if we were in mainland China, if we were in North Korea, we would never be able to say what we said, and we should feel very grateful that we live in a country where we can speak our mind." And I am grateful, and I think that needs to be shared on both sides of the aisle, that unites us. I remember Mayor Kranjek, when it was Mario Kranjek, would come up, and he would speak his mind to Joe Perizzi, and that was all fine, well, and good. I do believe, though, that we're in a situation in this town where, first of all, leadership, police department leadership, the chief is the chief, but the mayor is the mayor. The mayor is the elected official in the town, and the mayor needs to forge relationships. He may not like the person, he may have something against the person, but for the good of all people in the town, for the interest of all people in the town, for the safety of all people in the town, it's up to the mayor to put certain things aside and forge a working relationship with all department heads, including the chief in the town. And that means supporting, because it all goes downhill. It comes from the top, and it goes down to each individual officer. The question of overtime, I see that there's $25,000 left for the rest of the year. I guess that the mayor doesn't really have confidence in the people that is running his department. I wouldn't want to be in the mayor's position--
You got strong, I have a lot of confidence.
In Chief Chaffee?
In the department.
Thank you, I hope you do.
In the department.
Okay.
What I do with overtime, every morning I wake up, or every other morning, I recount, I confirm that no overtime was requested or approved for that day. I've had Chief Chaffee speak with our labor council in terms of finding ways to work within the PBA contract to minimize the need for overtime, and I do that every day, because unless you do it, you will have runaway overtime. And I greatly appreciate all our officers, including the ones that are here this evening, and I see four of them. But, you know, we have to balance, we have to balance the interest of the police earning overtime with the interest of the borough and the fiduciary purse, so, you know, I have to do all that. When I see things that aren't making sense, or I'm listening to things on tapes that don't make sense, it actually, it all makes sense now, what happened in the past. And we're going to go forward, we're going to fix it, and we're never going to look back again.
Well, you're big on facts, and you always call to facts over feelings, and I would hope, and I think you've not demonstrated this in the past, and I will respectfully say, removing a stone from a field and then having it put back, you, your facts, you have no feeling that went with your facts, therefore, you made illogical decisions, decisions that hurt people and offended people.
Not true.
So, yes, true, yes, true.
Because if 5,000 people wanted to put a monument in the park, then it's no longer a park, it's a cemetery, okay? And then our children get to play where, okay? That's my theory.
There was also a sign on the building that was taken down, and I think that you operated, you thought you were operating in a certain way, you have a problem in putting together fact and feeling which makes you highly illogical--
No.
--and possibly mentally ill there.
It's the rule of law, that's enough. Out.
And why didn't you support--
I'll tell you right now, but you have to leave.
Look, I was respectful, I said--
No, no, you leave, right now. You don't get to do that. I tolerate people, but I won't be your punching bag.
I'm not--
You get up, and you leave this room immediately, or I will have you taken out. You don't get to do that, okay? And you could tell your son what you said tonight, get out of here.
I will tell him what I said tonight, and I'm sorry that you take such offense, perhaps it's hit a little truth.
You can have an opinion, but you should not--
And it is, it is an opinion.
You need to leave.
It is an opinion.
You stepped outside of the bounds of reason, leave.
That, I--
Leave, you don't get to do that.
I was, what I said, I said it very calmly, okay? Are you taking a break? Take a break, then.
You can have an opinion, but you don't call people names, that's wrong.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is John Englishino, I'm an attorney with the firm of Englishino Webster.
Did you use the microphone?
Yes, my name is John Englishino, I'm an attorney with the law firm of Englishino Webster, Wichita Gallo and Taylor, located in Precipiny, Troy Hills, New Jersey. I'm here to address the contents of the package that the mayor had addressed, and one of the speakers had addressed at the beginning of the meeting, this anonymous letter, and the half-truths and baseless allegations that are contained in that package. I've had the privilege, over my approximately thirty-year career as a lawyer and as a former public servant, I served as mayor--
That's 210 years, by the way, because I've been doing this for thirty, it's like dog years.
Suchay. I served as mayor in Rockaway Township from 1996 through 2002, I served on the freeholder board in Morris County, I've worked in a few of New Jersey's most prestigious firms, I've worked with virtually every governor over the last thirty years, I've worked with and for members of both political parties.
We're okay now.
Is everything okay?
We are now, yes. We had one of your fellow officers take care of it, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I've had the privilege of working with many of New Jersey's most prestigious business people, elected officials, governors, et cetera. I say that because from 2010 through 2017, I worked as the township attorney in Precipiny Troy Hills, under Mayor Barberio. And what I can tell you unequivocally is that I have never worked with a person who has more integrity, more honesty, and more passion for public service than does your business administrator. I believe that, and I put my name and reputation on the line entirely to say this, that you are truly blessed in this community to have someone of the caliber of James Barberio serving this municipality. It is unfortunate, you all know from being in the political arena, that sometimes people are going to say things, they're going to come at you, they're going to attack you personally in ways that are very offensive, and what we all know is that sometimes when we stand up and we do the right thing, no deed goes unpunished.
If you're getting flack, you're over the target.
Yeah, and this is an example of that. So, I want you all to know that the truth is that every allegation in here is unproven, or has been proven untrue, and is a bunch of nonsense. I leave a few of my business cards, so that if anyone has any specific questions about anything they read, now or in the future, I want you to know that I'm always available to take your call and to provide you with whatever information, you know, you may want to have, okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Leave that with our borough administrator.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Good evening, mayor, members of the council. I'm thrilled that the gentleman got up just before me, who's an attorney and knows our borough administrator. Personally, I've only met him a couple of times to say hello. I'm one of those individuals who found a package, my wife found the package in my driveway, and whoever dropped it off was afraid to even come near the front door, I guess, that they might be seen or identified.
But they were, elsewhere.
Well, that's great that they were, because it really speaks volumes about who the individual is, and for another member of the public to come up and to further disseminate that information is just plain embarrassing. I mean, I looked at it quickly, nothing was substantiated, it was some newspaper, maybe an Eye on the Cliffs-type publication, I don't know what that publication was, nothing was substantiated that I know of, and we had a gentleman that spoke just before about it. So, I support the administrator. Again, I don't know his background well enough to say that I know him well, but unless there's a lot more information put out there, it's rubbish, it's rubbish. My wife put a pair of rubber gloves on to cut the envelope open, because she didn't know what the heck was in this thing, so, I mean, it just shouldn't happen. Like, anybody who knows who did it should get up and say, "You know what, it was wrong, it was wrong."
Does anyone here know who did it?
No.
Okay, and secondly--
Do you know?
Go ahead, sorry, all right, sorry, I interrupted you. Why don't you stop talking and let Mr. Porino finish?
I just, I urge, I thank each member of the council for the time, the volunteer activities that they do here, the time that they put in to make this town a better place, and I have to think about those that are giving to the borough and those that are taking away, and this is not, this is not political, whichever side of the aisle you're on, it doesn't matter, you know, members of the governing body, members of the planning board, all of these committees that are volunteer people serving on them, are giving back to the borough, and I'd like to just draw attention to that, because it's easy to get up here and to complain, and that's okay, they have, everyone has their right to do that, but the personal attacks, and what I like to call the political circus, or the partisan political theater that goes on here, it's just plain embarrassing. Speak your mind, state the facts, and let's move forward, because it's just, it's gotten, it seems to be increasing with veracity as time goes by, and it's just completely unnecessary. Each of you sitting here are filling a position that deserves respect, whether I like each of you or not, it doesn't matter, your office that you have, and Joe Perizzi spoke about this so often, "You don't like me, that's okay, respect the position, and speak to me with a modicum of respect." And for the circus that goes on here by certain individuals in each meeting, it's just intolerable, and should be condemned by everybody in this room. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yes.
Mayor, as you're appealing to the public about these tapes and about your issues with the chief, let me please remind you, and let me remind the council people and the public, that you waited a month, two months maybe, to file unfounded charges against the chief. You didn't know him, you had no background with him, so if there are some issues going on there, perhaps they're yours. Thank you.
Well, I don't record people. So, anybody else?
Right.
Anybody else wishing to be heard? Seeing anyone, have a motion to close--
Yes. After the public.
After the public?
No, no, he wanted to read after the public.
After the public, all right, so, have a motion to close the public.
I can.
One favor?
All right.
All right, Mr. Barberio, would you like to say something?
Members of the council, mayor, one thing I don't take lightly is some of the facts of my character, and I'm going to tell you something, when I saw that letter, I usually don't respond to others like this, to anonymous, but Mr. Sabari wanted to carry the torch for this individual, and I was frustrated. I got a phone call over the weekend from my former BA, saying he received a phone call from that individual. Now, I can tell you everything in that package--
Which individual?
The one that just came up, Mr. Sabari.
All right, okay, he's left the room now.
I know, he's not here right now. I can tell you everything in this package. I've been exonerated and everything, I've been vetted as a mayor, I've been attacked as a mayor, I've been sued as a mayor, I've been sued by RPD, I'm a police department individual, but you know what, I stand for principles. I was raised by a little Italian woman like this, and he brought his father up, I'm bringing my mother up. I was always upfront, one thing I never did was I never buckled, I stayed firm, I stayed strong on my convictions and what I believed was the right thing to do for the township of Precipiny Troy Hills, and I have to read this, because this is really frustrating. Whoever wrote this, and Debbie, I do appreciate your comment, because that means a lot to me, when someone puts a name to something, I have a lot more respect for them. You don't want the business administrator to do to angle a cliff we did to Precipiny. Let me tell you what I did to Precipiny. Okay, I grew up there, four years old, went to high school, Precipiny Hills High School. I said when I was 16 years old at Precipiny Hills High School, I was going to be the mayor of Precipiny. First time I lost, I licked my wounds, you lose, that's what happens, that's part of life. When I took office in 2010, Precipiny was in such a bad way, we had four, and I have to explain this, because this means what kind of person I was. When I walked into the office, and no disrespect to any prior administration, had a bad economy, the economy collapsed. The mayor before me, the DAB, was a nice man, two different parties, we got along. I heard his father, Mr. Luto, a Democrat, guess what? He was one of my mentors, but I loved him, because he taught me something, I learned something. Let me tell you, if I can do, when I do-- Let me tell you, if I can do, when I do it for Porcipony, Englewood Cliffs, you will benefit. Porcipony is the largest corporate center in the county of Morris. There's 26 million square feet of office space in Morris County, 14 million line Porcipony. When I got there, we had 4.7 million square feet of office space vacant. Porcipony was losing rateables, taxes were increased. Well, I filled all those 4.7 million square feet of office space, okay? Because I was dedicated, I was loyal. And I added another 500,000, committed 5.2 million, and I've had a 1.2% tax decrease across the board, 2-0%. And if I could do that for Englewood Cliffs, I think that's something you would want me to do.
Hold on a second. Ms. Geiger, please leave the room if you're going to have a conversation.
I will tell any council member here, you can call me up after you get this packet. I can explain everything. Now, as you will read, it says I'm not even qualified to be a business administrator. I was a full-time mayor, I ran the town, 55,000 residents, 180,000 residents during the daytime. I had, I was a public safety director, I was a police director. I ran the entire town, I ran it with everybody, I worked together with everybody. That being said, when that gentleman came up and gave you that packet, I will tell you this. I don't, I'm not angry at him, because whoever handed it to him doesn't have the courage to face me, but you can ask me any question. I sat in an interview with Councilman Park, with Councilman Rule, and Councilman Moro. I was upfront and everything, any question I was asked, I gave the answers that were truthful. So, that being said, I usually don't respond to stuff like that, but I had to tonight, because one thing I will not allow, I don't care, I'm not a mayor anymore, I had my political fights with both parties, my own and the other Democrats. But I fought them because you have to fight them, that's just the bottom line. But I'm now a business administrator. That was my goal anyway later on to be, and I don't want to be in the middle of these fights. I'm going to do my job, and that's what I'm going to do. But I encourage any council member, when you read that packet, please feel free, give me a call, I'll tell you everything about that packet, and I'll tell you everything about that news outlet that sends stuff out like that. So, that being said, Mayor, Council, I thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. Thank you.
Point of order, Mayor?
Yes.
On this subject, I would like to respond to what Mr. Barbario just said, and for the public, because I would like this to be on the record and on the video. I did not get a packet, but I got many phone calls by people that did get packed. Couple of things that I want to state. It was, it was very interesting to me. I want to make sure everybody can hear me. It was very interesting to me, the array of individuals that received it. Clearly, this was, whoever did this was from, not an outsider. This was someone, in my opinion, from our town, because someone from Porcipony would never have known how to pick the individuals who received this envelope. It was mind-boggling. That's number one. So it doesn't matter if whoever does it, whether you sign your name to it or not, that has nothing to do with it. And there's a lot of things that people do, that they don't sign their name to it, that doesn't mean they didn't do it. That's not, I'm going to put that on the record, too. Number two, that letter that Mr. Barbario read had, Mayor, this is important, what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Sorry. That letter that Mr. Barbario read, that was inside that packet, when I read that, it reminded me of a conversation that we had in closed session. I'm not going to go into the details, because those minutes have not yet been approved, and I'm not going to violate the Open Public Meetings Act yet. But there were only seven or eight of us in that room that would have known the subject that was chosen to be written about in that letter. That's number two. You don't know what I'm talking about? It's very clear, Ellen. I said the subject matter in that letter.
That was Gloria?
Gloria, sorry.
No idea what you're talking about.
The subject matter in that letter, this is just facts I'm giving you. The subject matter in that letter was...
I think you're speculating.
I'm not speculating, I'm stating facts. I'm not a lawyer, but I know the difference between speculation and fact.
Move on.
Number three. I'd like to know how Mr. Savon got the home phone number Mr. Barbario shared with me that his business administrator was called at home. Does she have a public number?
I don't know if she has one or not.
Okay. Well, her phone, her home phone number was on the document that was given to me that was in the packet at Borough Hall. And that's all I'm going to say. A lot of questions on that, Mayor.
Point of order?
Yes.
I just want to say that I did not receive whatever packet that was dropped off. Yes, I know about it, apparently my name is on it, but, you know, with all due respect to everyone, and James as well, you know, it's a tough position, everybody gets scrutinized, that's why we're here, and I wouldn't take it personally, and I'm glad you're taking it very kindly.
I will say this, Councilwoman, I don't take it personally, because if I took everything personally, I'd probably have a heart attack. But that being said, that's why I confronted the council.
All right, well...
You can ask any question you want.
Welcome to Englewood Cliffs. Where things that are said in public look much different when they're thrown in your driveway. All right, we'll deal with this. One person, one group of people who I invited to come tonight to speak at the podium were the Bergen Record reporter, editor, and publisher. I told them that they are a former newspaper and now making the news, so they are welcome to come to the microphone and speak their mind like the rest of the public. They've lost their ability to be a newspaper a long time ago, but most recently, in connection with the stigma-free zone controversy and the misleading headlines. So let me just explain my position on stigma-free zone, because they didn't understand it, or they chose not to understand it, or they understood it and chose not to write about it. I was approached last October by Ryan Roy, who was an activist for autism-related diseases, which I commended him on. And he said, "Well, you know, you're the only borough, or the only city in Bergen County that hasn't adopted a stigma-free zone." So I said, "Well, what does it mean to be stigma-free?" He said, "Well, you don't stigmatize people with mental illness." And I said, "Well," I wrote back to him, I said, "Did we do that? Did we as a town actually stigmatize anyone who had a mental illness?" He wrote back, "Oh, no, 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 you didn't do it, you didn't do that." And I said, "Well, it's a very vague term, stigma-free zone. What does it mean?" I mean, and we had a little exchange. So I viewed it as very broad and vague. Now, I want to support people who have mental illnesses. I want to support people who have depression problems, Alzheimer's, autism, Parkinson's, alcohol abuse, epilepsy, drug abuse, there's a lot of, lot of mental illnesses that we as a town, and if each council person wants to adopt one of those items, or one of those mental illnesses, and get us in touch with Autism Speaks or one of the other behavioral groups, so we can at least focus our charity towards them, rather than surrendering our support to a group that is very vague. After all, as I did research, the American Psychiatric Association defines mental illnesses, and there's over 450 of them. Okay, so there's 450, and not all of them are we going to want to support, but stigma-free zone does. So if you're a pedophile, or you're a sexual deviant, that all comes into that group. So in my view, we as a town can't justify just willy-nilly throwing our support behind a group that doesn't have a defined goal, okay? And the goal this year may change, and next year it'll be something different, that we might find that boring, but they may find it's perfectly fine, but we already supported them. So that's why I chose not to lend support on that. But alternatively, we do have a charity, as I mentioned, the Office of Concern, and I don't think you're all contributing to that, as I mentioned earlier, but moreover, I would like to see us as a council, since this is an issue that we can deal with in our own special way. Let's adopt, you know, if you come speak to me as a council individually, if you want to focus on one of those illnesses, even the ones that I didn't mention, but I can't support something vague, broad, and that's just going to get us into trouble down the road. Now, the other thing I did was, and Ryan Roy was a very nice guy, and I like what he's doing, but he's part of a group, not for profit, where more than half of their, you know, they raise 1.1 million a year, they spend 800,000 on salaries, compensation, and employee benefits. So what are we doing here, right? And nationally, the National Association of Mental Illnesses raises something like 14 million dollars and spends 8 million dollars on salaries. That's not what I want to be part of, okay?
Point of order, Mayor?
Hold, let me finish. If you're going to be charitable, let's just be charitable. Now, the other problem that I had with the group that Ryan Roy was from, and that was the group Heightened Independence and Progress, so one of their officers, one of their vice presidents actually sits on the board of Fair Housing Corporation, or one of those associations that I think we're in litigation with right now, so that would look even more foolish, right? So I don't want that. I want to have clear, defined objectives. Now, I know our police department supported them on their own, and I think that it's honorable that they want to support people who need to be supported in terms of mental illnesses. I would have liked to have been consulted, I would have liked to have some input in that, because, you know, if I'm a criminal defense lawyer, and now you're supporting a group that supports stigma-free zone, and I'm in front of you as a criminal defense lawyer, I'm going to say, "Hey, but wait a minute, you can't arrest him, he did a lot of bad things, but you supported the stigma-free zone." So it doesn't work in the legal concept either, where you're in a courtroom dealing with this kind of thing.
I mean, how rude.
Are you finished?
It's just so rude.
All right, the guiding lights of Englewood Cliffs, who think it's funny to have mental illness, okay, well, I'm sorry, Karen, that you feel that way, and Debbie, but you know what, people with mental illness really have serious problems that we have to address, okay? So, so I thought that, you know, we as a group, we could do better than what everybody else is doing, and that's just kind of like the Englewood Cliffs way, and actually instinctive and more on that. Then finally, a resident actually contacted me and said, "Hey, you know, these things get weaponized. The information that people provide to others in terms of law enforcement sometimes gets weaponized." So, you know, people will make anonymous calls about someone, and then next thing you know, the police is breaking down your door, and that individual felt it happened to him. So with a grain of salt, I think, and I stand by my decision, that we should support groups, but we shouldn't just support any vague group.
Can I have the floor now?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. So I respectfully disagree with your personal feelings, and I'd like to commend our police department for taking the initiative and becoming stigma-free. I have a motion on the floor. I move that effective immediately, the borough of Englewood Cliffs shall officially support and embrace the initiative of our ECPD and Chief Chiapi to declare and designate Englewood Cliffs as a stigma-free zone.
Okay, so, so the other issue I had was that, you know, we are the elected officials, the police department, as much as we like them and honor them, they, let me finish what I'm saying, they actually don't make the policy decisions.
Well, we are here to make the policy decision, and there's a motion and a second.
Good, and I don't agree with it, but you can have, if there's a second?
Yes, there's a second.
Of course there is.
And I have a resolution prepared here.
The resolution is to declare Englewood Cliffs a stigma-free.
Okay.
Do you pass that to all your council members, fellow council members?
Yep.
Was this handed out before, Gloria, or are you just doing this now for the...
No, I'm just giving it to you.
Okay, thank you. So you didn't send this before.
She's got copies.
Well, she didn't... Well, Gloria, let me ask you a question, why didn't you send this around before the meeting?
Before the meeting when? Today?
Now's the meeting, so before the meeting would be any time before the meeting.
Because I know that you're going to not let me put it on the agenda, Mayor. I mean, it's no surprise to everybody.
You never asked me to.
No, I didn't, I had a request.
You never asked me to put it on the agenda, Gloria.
Can you please keep that?
Next time I do that, Mayor, how about that?
I would add one, because I haven't seen it yet. Thank you. I just have a point of order, given all the libations that we have, you know, this whole thing of the police department being in here, having to change...
There's a second on the floor, let's take a vote.
Well, I mean, I guess everything I said kind of went right over your head in terms of being logical, so there's a vote that we need to take. It's okay, you can vote on it. We didn't read it, so if you want to vote no, vote no. It doesn't work, so just vote no. It's not logical.
How is it not logical, Mayor? We're the only, only municipality in the whole county that is not stigma-free zone.
We are stigma-free, we don't, we don't stigmatize people, we just don't need other people to tell us how to behave.
So put it on the resolution.
We know how to behave. If you feel you don't know how to behave and you need a resolution, that's your problem, but I don't think we do need this.
Well, you know what, I let the audience decide who can behave up here.
The audience can decide whatever they want, but we're here to run the town.
Okay, take a vote.
Who can have a vote?
But I can't make that.
No, but you can vote.
Point of order, will you stop, seriously? Stop yelling out from the audience. Councilman, I'd like to be able to consider this, but can, would you, would you allow us to table this, so we can talk about it?
No, there is a motion on the floor.
Excuse me, I understand that. I can make a motion to table it.
No, you cannot, not after a second, because the motion is made.
All right.
You could ask me to amend it, maybe.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute.
Off the downside of this, if there is one...
Okay, so, well, just from a, from a, just from a writing perspective, Gloria, are you looking to officially establish the borough as a stigma-free zone in accordance with that program's tenet beliefs?
Correct.
Because what you're saying here is they're recognizing an initiative that apparently the ECPD and Chief Chiapi did without the approval of the mayor and council. I would rather you say your motion to be that we establish the borough as a stigma-free, or authorize the borough attorney to look at the program and do it next month.
I'm not so surprised that you would say that, Emery. There's a second on the floor, and I think I...
Okay, but I have a problem with the now...
Of course you're going to have a problem.
No, no.
Anything on this side of the room, of course you're going to have a problem.
Let her speak.
Emery, you've done this many times before, you don't represent all of us, Gloria.
Please read your now...
Just take a vote.
Take a vote, take a vote. All right, take a vote.
Well, why don't we do this, delete the third whereas, because that...
You have to delete the now therefore, too.
And then I'll just...
If you delete the two whereas, is there, I'm okay with it, but not the way it's written, it's not legally, I don't believe it's legally correct, the way it's written.
And Gloria, let me ask you something, what does stigma-free mean? Gloria? Gloria, what does stigma-free mean?
You don't know what it means?
No, tell me, in your, in your view, what does it mean?
In my view, if anyone has any issues with mental illness, they are more than free to discuss it with the police, with people in the community, and not be a stigma-free...
So you're a prosecutor, right? Doesn't that put the police in a direct conflict?
Why? How?
They're not mental health counselors.
It doesn't put me in a direct conflict as a prosecutor, no, I don't think so.
Law enforcement is here, okay, and clinicians are there. Why are you trying to make up police...
That is your opinion.
Well, you're a prosecutor, right? So what happened to the...
You're an attorney, that's your vote, please.
Take a vote, please. I don't either, so I just have to take it.
Let's just take the vote.
Look, this was not written properly, so if you want to...
That's your opinion.
Well, here's the thing, if you sent it to us before the meeting, we would have read it and revised it for you.
So, just so, so I understand, apparently this is an exact copy of what the Bergen County Board of Chosen Freeholders adopted... Board of Chosen Freeholders adopted in June of 2013. I would really like to know what you did, Gloria, to establish the accuracy of what you're saying that the mayor and council are going to vote for. I don't know that these statements that you're making in your whereas are accurate or updated from five years ago, this is the exact same resolution, except for you added in that the ECPD and the chief took it upon themselves to do this. I'm not saying that's wrong or that's right, but the authority for the initiative rests with this borough, so putting in a whereas that our ECPD did something without the approval of the mayor and council seems to me self-defeating. Nevertheless, I just, and I also really question your paragraph two, because there is no way that the Bergen County has endorsed and established that their communities are stigma-free zones. The county does not have the authority to designate any individual municipality as a stigma-free zone, and by the way, that's not in the Board of Chosen Freeholders' resolution of June of 2013. I don't know where you got that from, but is it accurate?
Emory, there is a second on the floor, and we should take a vote, okay, because, let me tell you something, we've, we've...
I understand.
Let me tell you something, at the last, at the last, excuse me, I have the floor, at the last regular meeting, we took a vote, okay, on a matter that was inaccurate, okay?
I have no idea what you're talking about.
Well, you know what, you find out, because I will make it known to you, that the resolution, Mayor, that you signed from the last meeting was not what we voted on, okay? And that came from our borough attorney, so for her to sit there and say that this is inaccurate, it's just, you know what, Emory, like, just take a vote, okay?
All right, can I just say something?
It won't be the first time, maybe it's not done right.
I'm speaking now. So here's the thing, Gloria, what you miss in all this is that you're an elected official, the police department did not elect you, okay? You are an elected official, you have to act as a leader of the borough, okay, not as a puppet of others, okay? So that's exactly what you're doing right now, okay?
You know what, Mayor, that's very disrespectful, I'm not a puppet of anyone.
You are, because...
Okay, I am not.
First of all, if you're gonna give me something to read, make it logical, okay? Don't waste my time with...
Nothing is logical to you, I mean, this is like every...
That's the only stigma-free little point.
Yeah, I mean, I think we have more reason to be stigma-free in this municipality.
Actually, what you're doing is bullying.
No.
No, we can't be...
Just take the vote, because it wasn't on the agenda, you didn't have an option, you didn't have a choice.
You always add things on the agenda, so why add that we cannot?
Hold on a second, let me answer that question.
Just take a vote.
Whoa, 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 after our caucus meeting, we were adding a resolution, number 158, and we added, the reason we added it is so that the public can comment on the one that we added, and we said it twice. You sat there with this in your bag, and now you've been on council for what, nine years, and you still don't know how it's run? Come on, you have to tell us to put it on the agenda so that public could have a chance to speak on it, okay? And I'm not going to open to the public again, because I don't like surprises, okay? That's it.
You started to talk about stigma-free zone, Mayor.
Right, I talked about it, because I wanted to explain...
There's a motion on the floor, we're gonna take a vote.
Hold on, hold on.
It's not a valid motion.
You know what's gonna happen again, right?
Okay, so you make the motion, and then, then, then you can submit the resolution afterwards. Make the motion, make the motion exactly what you need.
We already made it, four times.
Mr. Councilman, please, Mr. Councilman, please.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, I, I, look, we are not, we are not putting this on the agenda tonight, we are not voting on it, we are not opening to the public.
Why not?
We'll deal with it next month.
No, we're not dealing with it next month.
All right.
No, there's a motion on the table, this video is gonna go straight to the AG's office if you don't stop.
Well, you know what, we made it three hours without a threat from Ellen Clark, I think we did pretty well tonight.
You know, on video, every, every meeting on video, shutting us down and not letting us take a vote on anything, every, mom, I'm telling everybody in town, look at the video.
Of course you are, of course you are, and when I get a package in, and when you all get a package in your driveway from Ellen about me...
That's me, yeah, okay.
Okay, guys, here's the thing.
I'm stating myself, right?
No, we're not doing it, we're not doing it.
There's a motion on the table.
I'm the chair of this meeting, we follow Robert's Rules of Order.
No, you know what, you don't follow Robert's Rule, it's called a Malians' Rule, you don't, you don't follow Robert's.
Robert's Rules, Robert's Rules are that you're supposed to not sit there...
There's a second on the floor.
No, there is no valid second, there's no valid motion.
You do this every meeting.
Are you gonna, are you gonna walk off today and end the meeting like that time?
No, 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 what we're gonna do is, we're going to go over the payment of claims, resolution 147.
No, we're gonna take, take a vote, take a vote, we have to take a vote, you know what, you know what, if we don't take a vote, if we don't take a vote...
We're not taking a vote.
We're not taking a vote?
We are not taking a vote.
Okay, we're, we're walking out, we're, we're, I'm walking out.
I'm serious, every meeting you do, you vote. Madam Clerk, read the motion, we have to...
Are you leaving? Are you leaving?
I should.
Go ahead.
Read the motion, 14 years...
All right, all right, here's the thing, guys, the, the resolution was very poorly drafted, it makes no sense, it's got no authority to back it, and it's not the county's resolution either. I explained to you my position, that side never listens to a thing, so I don't expect them to listen or understand, so, go ahead, vote.
Please read the motion again, because...
I read the motion, not accept the vote. I read the motion, okay. I move that effective immediately, the borough of Anglerwood Cliffs shall officially support and embrace the initiative of our ECPD and Chief Toffey to declare and designate Anglerwood Cliffs as a stigma-free zone.
Which no one understands what it means.
That's what you think.
All right, go ahead, you got a second?
There was a second, four...
You got a second?
Second.
Oh, great, so we have a motion and a second that no one understands?
Yeah.
Now let's have a vote on something that no one understands.
Okay.
This is your government, folks, if you're watching on television.
Yes, please watch, please watch, we have to deal with it.
I understand, and I think the spirit is correct, so I'm going to vote yes, I don't see any downside to this, I think it's a noble cause and a nice thing that the police did, and I think it's something that we should do with the community, so I vote yes.
Thank you, Eddie.
E. Park, I also vote yes, and I also want to commend the police for doing a great job. The mayor did not mention the Junior Police Academy, which everybody in town, all the kids, unfortunately, my kids couldn't make it this time, but they appreciated everything that you guys did with the children, and they had a great time, so thank you so much.
Do you think Councilwoman Wu can cancel this?
Oh?
Yeah, it was coming, but go ahead.
Councilwoman Wu?
Yes.
McMorris?
One of water, ma'am. I am not opposed to this, I'm opposed to the way that it's written.
We're not adopting the resolution, there's a motion.
Excuse me.
Okay.
I am not understanding what her motion is, and unless I have a clear resolution in front of me, I will be making a new motion as soon as we vote on this, but as this was handed to me in this condition, it's not a valid motion, I have no choice to vote now. I can vote.
So you are no, right?
Oh, no.
Okay.
What was your vote?
It's not a real resolution, I voted no.
And Park?
I'm the same reason as Carol, because this isn't, not the correct procedure, so we haven't told you that, no, don't laugh about it. We have a time in the closed session.
You just laughed.
To the nation about it, why you laughing about it?
Yeah, if you just laughed, you're in grace.
You're laughing about it, be quiet, please.
Yeah, Kiki, Kiki, I smiled.
No, I'm not talking to you, I'm, you, why you laughing about it, why I'm talking about it? We have the closed session, she didn't mention about it, we have a time, we can discuss about it. We have to discuss about it, you know, why you just come here and just come here and say we need this one? This is no good, we have to make a question about it, why, this is wrong, that's why.
I voted no.
No, no, I'm talking to you.
Okay, what is your vote? Did you get the vote of Kevin?
No.
No.
Councilman Wu?
I'm voting no, because I'd like to see our borough attorney have a look at this resolution first.
Mayor Khan?
Is your 3-3?
No.
One of water, ma'am, I make a motion to have the borough attorney look at a proper resolution for a stigma-free zone. I see all the police officers are leaving the room now.
So move.
Are you gonna wanna hear the whole meeting?
I wish you guys called me before.
Okay, so you don't wanna hear my motion, that's okay, we're not having a vote, we're not, thank you, thank you, thank you. Um, I don't know, it's okay, I make a, I make a motion.
A second.
But I have to finish my motion. I make a motion to allow the borough attorney to write a properly drafted legal resolution on a stigma-free zone. Do I have a second?
Second, well, actually, what I want to do is, if you're gonna do that, let me just say, if you're gonna do that, then at least add in specific mental illnesses that we, and exclude the ones that are abhorrent, because that makes no sense, okay?
Okay, but I'm just saying, this one that is legal, the way this is made.
And who's gonna decide what's legal and what's illegal?
You know what, it'll be on the agenda for everyone to discuss probably, not for each of us. And I have a second. Mark second.
Thank you. Thank you. Can you take the vote?
Behind you.
Here, here, Mark, Mark. It's clear. It's just...
Yeah, take a vote.
Cancel persons of versa?
So the motion is to individualize every mental illness.
No, we didn't say that.
No, I want, I want to exclude things that are just criminal or abhorrent.
Okay.
Well, let me give you an example, okay, like, if somebody's bothering people in a locker room, then that's abhorrent, okay? All right, we don't want to support that kind of behavior.
Okay, Mayor, let's be simple, please, we have, there's a motion on the floor, it's just...
The motion is simple, Ed.
A problem like this, it seems so simple, I'm sitting here over here.
But there are things in there that cannot be...
I'll, I'll look at it, and please review it, and let me know if...
Let the whole council see it and comment on it, and then we'll vote on it.
I'm not saying, oh, that sounds weird, if you're itemizing it...
No, he's not, he's not itemizing that, we're not the professionals.
I'm gonna go to the stigma-free website and see what it's about, that's what we're doing, right? Has anyone looked at the website?
I have. Gloria, did you look at the website?
Why are you putting me on this topic?
Because you, you...
Look at the website.
I did, actually, I have it right here.
Can we just have a vote?
Well, that's what we've been saying here for the past, like, half an hour.
Okay.
I voted no.
What's your vote, Ed?
I voted no.
You don't want it?
Individualize it.
It's not gonna be individualized.
If it's, if it's gonna be just, like, back, just reworded properly on board, but if it's individualized...
Well, that's not what the mayor said, so you guys are answering to a...
Wait, 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 she made a motion, it was a second, the mayor, God bless him, is editorialized. The final resolution, I drafted, and then you guys all have the right to ask questions, change it, add to it, look at it, I never get any comments from anyone on resolution.
Thank you very much.
So you are, please, yes.
I understand.
So just say, please, for the record, say that you changed your vote.
I'm just saying, I'm changing my vote, I don't need it.
All right, I'm changing my vote.
I don't understand what the motion is.
The motion is for the borough attorney to write a properly drafted legal resolution making the borough a stigma-free zone.
And I know, because I don't have any confidence in you.
I know that, I know that.
Wow, what a professional courtesy that is.
Hey, I tell the truth.
It's okay.
Oh?
Not really.
It's okay, it's okay.
You know what, I, I'm a little, I don't know which way to vote, honestly, because you're telling me one thing, but I know how things work behind the scenes. I don't have the faith, I don't, because you're saying one thing, Carol, mayor's saying another thing. See, he wants to, he wants to exclude certain things, who's not the professional? How do we need to say this one's okay and that one isn't okay?
Because, because you can't be a lemming and just do what everybody tells you to do, Gloria.
Oh, really? When you get the final version, at that point, if you're not in agreement with it, you can vote no yet, but I would recommend you vote yes.
Why don't you guys work on it together during the month?
You know what, I want to hear from the mayor on the record that he's not going to exclude anything.
It's my motion, right?
No, I want to hear from him, unless I hear from him, I'm voting no.
Well, of course I'm gonna exclude like pedophilia, you want pedophilia in there? You want to support people who are pedophiles? I will not do that.
Okay, just, it's a motion voting now. Let's go.
No, she hasn't voted.
What vote, please?
No.
Yes.
And Park?
Yes.
Wu?
Yes.
It's four yeses, man.
Okay, all right, let's do payment of claims, resolution 147, this is for the period June 14th, 2018 through July 11th, 2018, the total I have here is 955,960.50. Is that correct, William? I know you had, Councilman Wu, you had some questions about signing checks, is that number still the right number, or does that change?
I can't verify if that's the right number.
Did you pull anything off?
I pulled three checks, three payments to our labor attorney, but I can't verify if that's part of this payment of claims, or it's part of the previous month's payment of claims.
Who gave that number to you? Janice.
Well...
Was it in the stack for you to sign?
Yeah, Janice, I was under the impression that it was, I think some of them are older invoices that were never signed, so it could have been.
All right, so relying on our controllers...
You want me to echo that?
...representation, no, it's okay, relying on her representation that this is the right number, let's move forward on that assumption.
So move.
Second.
Give a vote.
Councilpersons of versa?
Yes.
E. Park?
Yes.
Oh?
Yes.
McMorris?
Yes.
And Park?
Yes.
Wu?
Yes.
Pass. One of the next one?
Yes, resolution 148, approved bicycle ride, escape New York, ride through Anglerwood Cliffs, next year we'll have one that's escape from Anglerwood Cliffs to New York.
Motion?
Give a motion?
So move.
Second.
Give her a vote.
Councilpersons of versa?
Yes.
E. Park?
Yes.
Oh?
Yes.
McMorris?
Yes.
And Park?
Yes.
Wu?[1717.83]
Authorized tax appeal, block 615, lot 11, 635 Palisades Avenue, that's number 149.
Just, just as a reminder, did everyone read the resolution and no one has confidence to vote on that? The resolution has the names of everyone of the property owner, right?
Just everybody take a minute and look at it.
I reached out.
Oh, thank you, I'm sorry.
No, I reached out to them.
Okay, okay.
All right, let's have a vote. Do we have a motion?
So move. Second.
Who, I'm sorry, I didn't hear them. M. Park and Wu. Okay, councilpersons of versa?
Yes.
E. Park?
Yes.
O.?
Yes.
McMorro?
Yes.
M. Park?
Yes.
Wu?
Yes.
150, acceptance of the 2017 audit. Need a motion?
So move. Second.
Councilpersons of versa?
Yes.
E. Park?
Yes.
O.?
Yes.
McMorro?
Yes.
M. Park?
Yes.
Wu?
Yes.
151, accept corrective action plan for 2017 audit, motion?
So move.
I'm sorry, who moved it? Mark?
Mark.
Councilpersons of versa? E. Park?
Yes.
O.?
Yes.
McMorro? M. Park?
Yes.
Wu?
Yes.
152, authorized tax appeal, block 204, lot 19, in motion?
Second.
Councilpersons of versa?
Yes.
E. Park?
Yes.
O.?
Yes.
McMorro?
Yes.
M. Park?
Yes.
Wu?
Yes.
153, authorized approval of excess sewer rate? Councilpersons of versa?
Yes.
E. Park?
Yes.
O.?
Yes.
McMorro?
Yes.
M. Park?
Yes.
Wu?
Yes.
154, ratify mayor's execution with regard to NJ, New Jersey Transit Grant for Senior Bus. Need a motion?
Second.
Councilpersons of versa? E. Park?
Yes.
O.?
Yes.
McMorro? M. Park?
Yes.
Wu?
Yes.
155, approval of employee donation program?
Second.
Councilpersons of, uh, of versa?
Yes.
E. Park?
Yes.
O.?
Yes.
McMorro?
Yes.
M. Park?
Yes.
Wu?
Yes.
156, approve MS ride through Anglerwood Cliffs?
Second.
Councilpersons of versa?
Yes.
E. Park?
Yes.
O.
Point of order, I can't hear Will, he's walking in the back over there.
Yes.
Ms. Parker? Ms. Parker, we're having a meeting here, please.
McMorro?
Yes.
M. Park?
Yes.
Wu?
Yes.
157, temporarily suspend time provisions in chapter 4.1 of the Borough Code and authorize agreement with solicitor.
Point of order?
Yes.
To the borough attorney?
Yes.
So what is this about?
Okay, I sent you the, uh, documents yesterday.
I know, we got it late last night.
Yes, I understand. Um, I can't talk too much about the threat of litigation, but you under, what we have is a 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM limitation in our solicitation ordinance, Mondays through Saturdays, it's 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM. The United States Supreme Court and our own federal district court and many other courts have overruled a 4:00 PM limit years ago, including a case involving Edison in 1985 in the federal district court. There is a solicitor that applied for a license and wanted to go to 30 minutes after sundown, which is what the case law generally provides. Solicitations, door-to-door, are commercial free speech, and they are pretended under the First Amendment of the United States and the, the Constitution and the New Jersey Constitution. The resolution says that, the proposed agreement that I sent you says all of that as well. We are temporarily suspending the time limit and replacing it with 9:00 AM to 30 minutes after sundown, Mondays through Saturdays. They have to be licensed with all the regular requirements, and, uh, we will have an ordinance on for next month and the month after. Our insurance carrier, as you can see from the resolution, Mel, the Municipal Excess Liability Joint Insurance Fund, has recommended that all of its towns, which we are one of them, they are the, they are the insurance organization above each of the individual municipal GIPs for excess liability. They issued a legal bulletin telling their municipalities to look at their ordinances because there are, there are several vending types, vendor types of solicitation companies going around suing. Would, yes. Wood Cliff Lake got sued and they got an order show clause and a injunction issued against them by the federal court just a few weeks ago because of theirs. And by the way, their curfew was 6:00 PM, ours is 4:00 PM. So he would most definitely lose. Wood Cliff Lake, after spending and having the other side spend probably fifteen or twenty thousand dollars, has now conceded the point in the federal court. So regardless of that, I don't wanna see another litigation when we can easily fix this, and it is clear based upon case law and our constitution about the solicitation.
They haven't initiated anything with us, though.
Oh, big threat, and they gave me a deadline, and since Mel said temporarily suspend until you can get your ordinance done, that's what we're doing here. So the resolution suspends it, puts a new thing in place, we've got an agreement from this one vendor that he will not sue us while we are doing the amendments, okay, so that's how it's going.
So another question, Emily. So the resolution says that, um, New Jersey Mel has issued a legal bulletin on, uh, May 25th?
Yes.
When will, when will we notify that we have to do this?
I said, well, we don't have to do it.
We don't have to do it?
No, no, it's a recommendation.
Okay.
They don't tell us what to do.
So when will we notify that this is something that?
I did not receive it.
You did not receive it?
I'm sorry. I don't know when the borough was officially notified, I don't know if the borough was officially notified. Mel's legal bulletins are addressed to all of its member organizations. Its member organizations are all of the individual regional GIPs, we're part of the South Bergen GIP. It went from Mel to the South Bergen GIP. Theoretically, South Bergen GIP should have sent it to all of the municipal entities. Whether they, whether or not they did, I don't know. I got them in the context of a threat of litigation by this vendor.
I, I have a question.
Yeah, and I can call that to you.
Just out of curiosity, how long have we had the 10 to 4:00 PM hours?
One time.
It's so old that the date of adoption is not in our code, okay? And it's not unusual, I had another client not a month ago, they have towing ordinance from 1982, and since then, there's state laws that have changed all over the place, uh, including, you know, predatory towing practices. This is, we're taking action, positive action ahead of time.
Just asking a question.
Anybody make a motion?
No.
I'll make a motion.
I second.
Thank you.
Councilpersons of versa?
Yes.
E. Park?
Yes.
O.?
Yes.
McMorro?
Yes.
M. Park?
Yes.
Wu?
Yes.
Then we have, uh, we have resolution.
There's one other thing I want you to note also, and you'll see that in the agreement when you have the chance to do it. There are certain things they've agreed to for protection of our residents. Anyone who knocks on their door will have an employee ID and a copy of the borough permit. So if they say, I'm knocking, I'm knocking on your door because I wanna sell you S. Control, they should have those two documents. And of course, we do get background checks too, okay? Sorry.
Resolution 159, you wanna read into it, please?
158.
I'll read it. Uh, authorize issuance of contract. Well, no, 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 it's going in about the borough interest, the borough attorney and the mayor and the borough clerk. What, what, this is the motion, authorize issuance of contract to DNL Paving, the designated vendor for Riverside Polo for paving projects, and Mazer Engineering, the borough engineer, for the Riverside Polo project and the DOT grant to be effective after the bond is stopped, period. That's the name, that's the name, and a resolution will be provided after.
Motion?
Second.
Councilpersons of versa?
Yes. Yes.
E. Park?
Yes.
O.?
Yes.
McMorro?
Yes.
M. Park?
Yes.
Wu?
Yes.
And 159?
Ordinance 2018's first reading, public hearing on August 8th. Madam clerk, would you please read it?
An ordinance fixing salaries, wages, compensation for all salary-appointed and elected officers within the borough of Anglerwood Cliffs, County of Bergen, State of New Jersey. Need a motion?
So move.
Need a second?
Can you, second?
Need a second. Second.
Point of order, I have a point of order. I thought that we were gonna put ranges. I don't wanna talk about this, I talk about this every year, and every year it never seems to make it on here. Why are we, why, why are we just not putting ranges?
Emily, what should we do, Emily?
I don't, I don't draft this ordinance.
Oh, we didn't do a new ordinance there either.
Right, so we've said it before.
In other words.
Minimum maximum.
Minimum maximum, because it's not difficult, you can go over this, and I'm just gonna use it like this. If somebody runs into a 2% longevity, any of these employees that may be mid-year, and you're looking at it now, and then that kicks in, and you're over the salary, I'm just saying, it's a $200 range, I'm just saying.
This is just an introduction, it could be amended so that the, at the public hearing, it'll have a salary range.
Wait, 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 timeout. You can't make substantial changes to an ordinance between the first and second. Are we gonna do something that we need to have approved by our unions?
No.
No, no.
No, absolutely not.
You don't have to do anything under CBA for that.
No, I'm saying, in other words.
I know what Carol wants.
That's the stuff that's said right here, says 2311. The range will be from 25, not 26. Between 23, uh, and I would put.
Twenty, twenty-five, yeah.
Their bump off of 2% comes from the middle. The employees protected, the way this.
Okay, but we don't have to do a range for the mayor and the house person, they know what to do.
The CFO will know what to do, I'll give him Carol's direction.
Okay, so do you understand the ordinance is being amended now?
Okay, I'm amending it now.
For first reading.
Hello? Any guys okay?
Yeah.
I'm amending it now, so it'll be a $3,000 range.
Okay, I need a second. Carol, you wanna second it?
I make the motion.
Wasn't it important?
No, somebody else had made the motion.
Yeah.
Oh, and I amended it, I amended it.
Okay, withdraw the first motion, motion, and, 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 and correct.
I'm sorry, withdraw it.
Uh, Councilman Park has.
Uh, yeah, I wanna read the first, the motion.
Okay, so now here's the motion. Uh, this is an ordinance on first reading in 1813, an ordinance fixing salaries, wages, and compensation for all salary-appointed and elected officials within the borough, as read, uh, as on the written document, but to have appropriate minimum, maximum amounts with a range of $3,000 as determined by the borough CFO. And the, the, uh, the minimum and max will be into the final document for second reading and will be published at that time.
So I make that motion. Something's gotta second.
All right, second, okay.
Second.
Councilpersons of versa?
Yes.
E. Park?
Yes.
O.?
Yes.
McMorro?
Yes.
M. Park?
Yes.
Wu?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Um, committee and council member reports, uh, Councilman of versa? Councilwoman Park?
Okay, to report.
Councilwoman O.
Um, through the Transportation Committee, I am very happy to report that we were able to submit our application for the federal grant uh, to get a, a mini bus for the seniors. We had requested for a 12-passenger minivan. Um, and I'd like to personally thank James, Lizette, and Mark for getting me the information so that I can, I, um, was able to submit the application in time. We'll know whether we're approved or not by the end of this year. Thank you. Yeah.
Councilwoman McMorro?
Right now, the 5K committee is getting ready for the 5K run walk, which is in September 16th. Uh, also, uh.
I hope everyone here is running or walking.
If you can run or walk, it's great, and all of that proceeds go to improving renovation and parks and playgrounds. Uh, also, soccer is, uh, doing more than one, that's. And the last thing is, I'm gonna be working, Jamie, with you, uh, getting the scoreboards for the schools and the capital budget as soon as that traffic period is over. Should be next week, we need to get the three bits, get the specs and the sizes to the school, make sure that we get those ordered, one for the upstairs gym, one for the lower gym, so they can have it in time for the new school year.
Councilman Park?
Yes, planning board, the last month, so all the regulations approved, and the three new business we discussed for a long time. I appreciate all the planning board members, they are spending a lot of time. I think last month, also, over 10:30, they discuss about it tomorrow. New business, they will continue to discuss about it. Thank you for your, their time and dedication, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Wu.
Firstly, as our reference area, the Junior Police Academy, thankful that it continued to run this year, um, it was kicked off by the mayor and the chief, and some of the offices, as I remember earlier, were all there, um, looked like a terrific program, I think there were probably 25 or so kids that were in there, um, on day one, um, so, looked, looked fantastic. Just wanna thank, um, Mark Neville and the DPW crew, uh, community made out, tremendous amount of people turned out, and also the cleanup job is equally as, uh, challenging, so Mark, thanks for doing that. Um, I also wanna say, relative to our tennis courts and our basketball courts, it's great to see that they're actually being used. Um, the tennis courts, there's a program run on Sundays, um, the basketball courts, there's pickup games now on Tuesdays and Thursdays. Um, if anyone gets out to the field, you can see all the kids out there. Um, and then, um, that's, that's it, thank you.
Thank you. Also wanna congratulate the Anglerwood Cliffs Little League 10U team, they won the 2018 District 6 championship this week. And, and girls softball, I'm being told just now, I didn't know until now, also won, um, championship. Okay, we'll, we'll get more information, we'll have the teams visit us for a ceremony. And then my, my final comment on new business, and if anyone else has any good.
I have, I have a point of order, can I say one thing?
Just when I'm done. Well, uh, for borough professionals, um, look, you know, um, everyone's trying up here, and I, I, I saw several instances tonight and over the past year where, where people are just rude to our borough professionals, um, our attorney, our engineers, and, and others. Look, these people deserve your respect, okay, and it's not right to attack people. Attack issues, but don't attack people, okay? I, I just think it's important, and then it becomes even more important when, when somebody from the same profession is attacking that person, uh, because had, had that taken place within a courtroom, they would be sanctioned for sure, okay?
Now, can I say something?
Yes, you can.
I actually wanna congratulate all the Croatian residents in town for the World Cup win today, including you, mayor, so, uh, to, to be, you know, end the meeting, um, the World Cup, uh, is a good victory, so.
Thank you, and I, I wish the American team was in there, but, um, I'm rooting for the other team.
One more reminder, um, on the calendar, uh, seniors barbecue this Sunday, uh, 1 o'clock, right, Mary? Okay, so everyone, uh, get your friends out there. All right, thanks.
I do want to, uh, speak to Gloria and the rest of the council about a resolution that, a resolution that had a mistake that Gloria was referring to. And I read the motion into the record, and I read the motion into the record incorrectly. We all knew that we were adopting the hearing officer's recommendation, and I read the wrong thing. So the clerk and I consulted, we listened to the tape, and it was clear that I read the wrong recommendation of the hearing officer, and the mayor and council voted on it. Well, okay, you didn't vote, you were recused, some, some, some of you might have been recused, I forget. Regardless, Gloria has brought up a point about me, I did thereafter draft a resolution which contained the correct thing that this mayor and council intended to do. They intended to approve and adopt the hearing officer's recommendation. Clearly, the words that came out of my mouth were incorrect, and I own my mistakes, I made a mistake. I happen to think the actual writing, which reflects what this council intended to do, is the appropriate way to have handled it. But in light of what, uh, Councilwoman O has said, I will put forth another resolution next month recognizing that the oral motion was incorrect and the, the resolution signed by the mayor is correct. I apologize to all of the men. I apologize to all of the members and members of the mayor and council, I should not have taken it upon myself to correct that, even though I thought we needed a signed resolution because people were asking for it under Oprah, okay? Regardless of that, and, and certainly the chief also said something to me and I didn't even know what he was talking about.
Emily, okay, when you're finished, I like.
Hold on, hold on. I also want to say, it is very challenging to represent this borough. There are many, many things that me, and maybe you don't believe me, but I have a